Good evening. I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order for February 10th. Thank you all for attending this evening. First item is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion relative thereto?
True.
Mr. Bailey moves. Mr. Giles seconds. Any changes to be made?
Yeah, I'd like to add a 7A. A short discussion about the BLSG report in the town report.
Okay. 7A. Discussion of the BLSG report in the town report. Anything else? If not, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Item two, the minutes of January 27th. Is there a motion to approve? I make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion and second. Any errors or omissions? I unfortunately have one. Sorry for showing. So on page seven, item sevens. The Town Farm Road Traffic Study. So about a third of the way down the big paragraph, it says the report indicates the average speed was 29 miles per hour, but the average speed was 24. There was another speed that was reflected that was 29. It was the median speed. And then further down, three lines up from the bottom in the same paragraph, it said in a five-year span, there have only been two accidents on the paved portion, but I believe it was on the unpaved portion.
That's true too.
So that should be unpaved and not paved. And then at the end of that item, it says the motion failed one to three, and I believe the motion failed one to four. I think we all vote aye. Yeah, we're trying to make everybody vote aye. Yeah, if there's a number. Any other spots and amendments? If not, all in favor of approval of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Who in favor of the minutes?
I don't think, I don't know what you've been...
Okay. Mr. Bailey abstains. 301. Item three, town manager's report.
Last report for the weeks of January 27th and February 4th. Segment six, pretty brief. They installed the hand railings downtown area last week. That's about it for right now, for now until snow leaves again. Received a draft plan for the townhouse sidewalk roof, and we'll have a construction cost soon. I did attach the draft plan to my report for you guys to take a look at. Right construction, we're doing the sidewalk roof, was also, I had a look at the roof here on the east side of the building, there's some damage, there was some ice went through it, not even sure how long ago. So they're gonna redo the roof there. Size a hole in it, ruined a section of plywood sheathing, and we're putting the shingles on it. So it's about, hopefully they can do it for around two grand, maybe less depending on how much it takes them, so get that fixed up. This morning, I met with Devin Neary from the Regional Planning Commission, I completed a site visit at the parking area behind the mobile station. We're hoping to submit a transportation grant for the construction of the parking area, and it's gonna cover 50% if it's awarded to us. A couple things we've looked at is doing some more storm water mitigation projects, or some bio swells down there, because there was a burke down there, some better lighting. The discussion was had about putting some 24-hour surveillance in there, and doing like a bus stop type thing, like we used to have up here by Abashan's, and sort of make this kind of park and ride friendly. So there's more funding out there too, if we turn it into a kind of a green type area with the storm water mitigation, so we would still be paid a bit. So I actually got Dave Conger from D and K to give us a real rough draft plan set that we can use for the proposal, so we'll have that submitted here probably by the first of March, and find out in May whether we receive it or not. Attended the regional plan transportation meeting on the 30th. The discussion was on Class 1 Highway priority list for Rutland County, and it was nice this time to see that all of our Class 1 highway projects are finally off the list. And as you know, we had a lot of them on there for a lot of years, so it's good to see us off the list.
Meaning completed.
Completed, yeah, they just kicked us off, so yeah. Park Street was the last one, so we're gonna start on this here. And we'll have a contractor engineer pre-construction meeting on March 10th for Park Street, and after that, we will schedule a public meeting to discuss the project timeline, so... Rec news. The new Brandon Rec website is up online. You can check it out at brandinv.tmyrec.com. 2020 Littleberry Snowmobile Registrations will be the first of our youth program that will use the new site, collaboration with Pittsburgh Rec. Have a bus with skiing or riding lessons half a day pass on the first four Sundays, first four, first four Sundays in March. How many Sundays are there?
Five.
The town hall was rocking on Saturday night. The grip guy was entertained with the real buzz was upcoming teen band opener Sweet Spinks. They featured a host of talented musicians from Brandon, keep an eye out for them. They're actually playing at the Distillery on Friday, if anyone wants to go. February 15th, we'll mark the first of the teen Brandon Island concerts, Five Dogs Mission, you can hear these performers sing country tunes with our live house band, along with a featured guest performer and a group member. This is a great way to spend a wintry Saturday night. The adult beverages are provided by Mace, and a local AAU team will have concessions. See you there.
Should we pass, should we also pass on the information that Tracy's singing?
He might be the special guest. A shout out to the Brandon Area Toy Project and this PTL for partnering to host the first Mom Prom at the Town Hall on February 22nd. This is a ladies-only event from 8 to 10, before the doors open up for the guys. Dressing up and dancing like senior year classmates. The tickets for this and all Brandon Rec events are available online at our website. February Break Camp will be hosted at the Town Hall featuring our camp director, Ms. Colleen Wright. From 9 to 1 Monday to Friday, these 5 to 13-year-olds will be line dancing, playing cornhole, watching movies, singing, as well as producing some pretty sweet crafts. Drop-ins encouraged. And basketball ends, our signs, our sites turn towards spring sports. Currently, the Rec is looking for volunteer baseball and across coaches. Please contact Mr. Bill Moore with any interest. And the only other thing I have is I did attach a select board training brochure, I'm sure you guys all got it, but just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Questions for the town manager from the select board?
I just want to check that out. As far as Devin Neary and the Rutland County Planning Commission, if we were able to get a grant that could cover even some of the 50% towards paving?
It would cover 50% of the project cost, yeah. Well, we're hoping too, that if we can coordinate this right, we're kind of trying to fast track this, so fortunately, we're kind of like built ready down there, which is good. And because it's such a small lot, we actually don't have to deal with a lot of the state permitting, because it's less than a acre. That if we can get online and get this stuff done at the same time that Dunkin' Donuts is doing their paving with Doc to Dan and Dukeshire there, we could try to just continue it, when especially with our topco, so we're seeing this, we'll be the way, we're hoping that's what we can break.
Super. Thank you.
Mr. Atherton, relative to the east side of the town hall, old stairwell entrance, what is the present use of that?
Where's the exit? Is that... Yeah, it's actually the one right here, if you walk, the rest comes a much straight. But the, there's been a hole in there for a while, and it's really starting to mold the plywood, so it's...
So has there been water, like down in the...
I don't know, I mean, it's been kind of covered up, but it's definitely, the roof sold with some water, so...
Questions for the town manager from the public? Alan Butler.
Dave, we have our Greenways Committee meeting tomorrow, which is part of the DBA, and the new parking area keeps coming up at every meeting, and it seems especially now there's a bus stop there. Do you know what the public walkability would be like coming in and out of the new parking area? Because it seems like it's just kind of that driveway, the snowplows don't be done.
So the town has a right away on this side of, so the east side of the town. We're, like I said, we're in the early stages of planning here, so we're looking at what we can do for walkability, and how we would do a sidewalk coming out of there if we ran it along the buildings, or along more of the stone wall area. So we really don't know yet.
Got it.
We're going through someone else's property, so we have to work with them to see how we're gonna do it.
Other questions from the public? Mr. Frankwitz.
New Town Farm Road is gonna be repaved?
Hmm, not for a while. No. That one, we have to do a rebuild on, we're looking at, that's a few years ago.
Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty far up, drainage is bad, so I believe our, our shim and overlay projects were parked for the whole, the next coming year would be Park Street Extension, Country Club Road North from Park Street Extension to Route 73, and Corona Street is what we're looking at. And then others, you know, what we have left over, what are we good, so...
That road with the asphalt?
Yeah, well, if we have some funds left over, you know, we could do a couple of small jobs, like we're looking at...
The red funnel at the end of New Road and Town Farm Road?
Yep.
It gets slashed up here and it throws the ice?
Yep. That one's gonna take more than just a shim and an overlay though, that road needs to be rebuilt, and that's where we're at, so we're gonna try to hopefully some more funding for that, do it properly, instead of just putting a mandate on it.
Other questions for the town manager from the public? Mike Frankwitz.
There used to be some geographical markers in the park that told the elevation, the longitude, latitude, and before this blast, also eventually the park looking for it. You know where it might be?
Nope. Actually, our engineers looked for it too when we were doing something else, and they are gone, so I think they disappeared before the park rebuild too. They were, well, they weren't ours, so I don't know where they went to.
Because it was on a big slab, or I seen it on, in the park, it was on, this map, but you know where it went? What can you do on it?
I don't know. I think it was redoing all their maps, so I'm sure we'll see something at some point that shows up with elevations on it.
Okay, there was another mile marker, zero mile marker, it was just in the way of the congregation church. It was in World Depression, you had the script to stand out to see it, and that was where everything was measured from Brandon, with the Littleberry or...
If it's that historic marker, they have to put it back, so I don't, I haven't seen that one.
I haven't seen that one.
I can ask them about it, I don't know.
Those are interesting items for further research.
I'm getting all this done, Charlie?
Other questions from the public for the town manager? If not, we'll move along to public comment and participation. This used to be called items not on the agenda, so we start with the select board. I have nothing to bring up tonight that's not on the agenda. Mr. Bailey, have anything?
Due.
We did not add, I wasn't sure whether you were coming, so we can do it right now.
Okay. Yes, I wanted to just have a brief, open discussion as to the select board's handling either citizen suggestions or complaints as they come up with all the board members and the public or whatever. So I believe the way we have been handling things in the last few years is that if someone calls us, we refer to, we can get the information and call Dave with the information, so that he can follow things back, but then we don't try to solve a problem on our own, and just wanted to see how the board all feels on that, and make sure that, it's not really a policy, but it's our procedure that we do.
Yeah, my, my thought is that when somebody contacts me, I reply, so they get a response, and I forward it to the board, so the board knows what's been, what I perceive. And, and I certainly, you know, remind them, the person who's interested, about the process, and about the appropriate person to go to to solve their problems. And so, right, I would concur that that's, that's the way we operate. I would also concur, it's been my habit or practice, I guess, that I'll kind of have a conversation once with someone about a particular issue, and then the second time I tell them that we need to come to the board with it. So it is probably worthwhile to talk to the camera, and to talk to the folks in the room, and to have the reporter hear this, that, you know, the select board, it's not like I represent a certain number of people, and so does Doug, and Tim, and Tracy, and Brian. You know, we all represent the whole town. We can only act as a board, so if you have something that you want the select board to act on, the select board is here to listen to your concerns, but we're here to listen as a group, because that's the way it's supposed to work. So if you have something that the town manager could act on, he's certainly got an open-door policy in his office, and he has the ear of all the department heads and so forth, if you have, you know, stuff highway-related, or police-related, or code enforcement, or rec-related, things like that. But if there's a matter that you want the select board to address, really, the select board as a whole needs to hear that. So none of us can speak for the select board to someone who has a concern, and none of us should be put in the position of speaking to the select board for someone else, is kind of how I think the board's practice has been.
Yeah.
Tracy, did you have anything?
No, I, wondering what your, what you said. Yeah, and if clubs or organizations are recruiting us, or asking our opinion, we give them a personal opinion, but we can't speak for the board, right? So, you know, I just want that clearly noted, so to speak, and by bringing it up, at least it's in the record, it's in our minutes and whatever, that's how we operate, and that's how it has to be, so...
Yeah, there's a little different flavor that's coming out though, which is, has come up recently, is this, well, it's certainly true that we don't speak for the board as individuals, and that if everything, any decisions need to come through the process, open meeting law, that kind of thing. I think especially in a small community, it's helpful for board members to talk with community members. And, and so I think to suggest that we shouldn't be talking to the community members except in a, in a meeting process, I think is a mistake. And I, I, I think the part that I would slice very finely is to say, is to completely support this idea, that no, no selectmen can speak for the board, or make decisions and everything. But I would encourage selectmen to vigorously get to know the issues in our town, and to talk with people, to explore ideas, explore solutions, and then encourage them to come to the select board, so it can go through a public process. And I think the distinction I'd like to draw is that, one of the fascinating things I learned when I became a selectman, is that we actually act as all three elements of government. We act as a judicial procedure sometimes, we act as a legislative procedure sometimes, sometimes we're in executive range, even though we have an executive, there were moments when we direct things this way. And when we're operating as a judicial setting, like for example, court of debate or something, it's really important that we don't have what are called ex parte communications. And in that way, I think we have to be really careful about not having conversations outside of meeting format. However, when we're operating as a legislative body, which I think is most of the time, I often tell people, listen, if you want something to happen at the select board, you've got to convince three selectmen to support it. And I think it's appropriate for them to try to educate selectmen on issues that they care about. And, and I don't think it's deceptive, and if anything, I think it's, it's a desirable part of our process to educate ourselves on issues, and become knowledgeable, and perhaps advocate or speak against them, you know, as you learn more information. And so, and so I, I think I slice it slightly different than the way Seth represented it.
I think my, my point here, or, you know, concern comes up that many times, our phone rings, and if someone has got a problem, and it's nice to be able to help them solve the problem, but that we can't solve the problem if the snowplow hits your mailbox, or if the, you know, the department dog down the street, and they, you know, want to call the police, or they can't get a response, you know, we can contact Dave, Dave can contact the department heads.
Exactly.
You know, and that that's the proper channels, and they don't mind that someone calls us, but they have to understand that we can't solve that problem.
No, I agree with you there.
And, and if there's a, a group that wants, you know, our, our help and assistance, I agree, I think being, having our ear to the ground and talking to anyone and everyone we can is great, but we, we need to be careful, and they need to know that it's a fine line as to where we can express our opinions as a board member. So I just felt it was good to air at the wrong time.
Thank you.
You know, and if we pump at the Dave, and we know that Dave's gonna call, the people involved, then we're good.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Bailey. I appreciate it, and I think that the select board always needs to be kind of aware of how people perceive the role of the select board, how people perceive the role of an individual member of the select board, and it's, it's good to bring this up from time to refresh people on it. Mr. Giles, did you have anything for public comment participation?
No.
Mr. Wyman? Members of the public, anything not on the agenda tonight that you'd like to talk about?
I just had a question about that. I hear what you're saying, and completely understand and respect that. When would be a good, when is the deadline to put something on the agenda for the select board?
Generally Friday by lunch, by 10:00.
So the select board meetings are the second and fourth Mondays of the month, and the packets are usually done by Friday afternoon.
Perfect.
So, yeah, the packets are delivered to each selectman at their home Friday evening for review, but if there's something you want to talk about, and you haven't got it to be on the agenda, this is the time of the public conference time. Something that happened on the weekend, you could come here and talk about it. So you never get told, no, you can't talk.
Right.
And you can always, like, if you think of something tomorrow, we can make sure it's on the agenda. Elaine starts, has already started the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Yep.
It's always there to be added on.
Perfect.
And similarly, if it's a big enough thing, we may make sure it's worn properly, so when we make a decision, everybody knows that we're about to make a decision.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public with items not on the agenda tonight that you would like to discuss? Mr. Beal?
Well, on this topic, what if it's an issue you're having that involves a lot of information and paperwork, and it's submitted to the whole board as a complaint or whatever? Is that what executive sessions are for, or how do those address?
Right, so if a matter comes, if, if a, if a person in Brandon assembles some information and distributes it to the select board without checking with anybody first, that is okay. And then I basically would say it's up to the select board to decide in what form, what forum, to address it. So we have got an executive session tonight, which is actually to handle just such a thing. It's material that was sent to the select board, but which involves a public officer or employee's performance of his official duties.
Okay.
So we're going to address that in the executive sessions.
My only other question is, it's three weeks till the town meeting, so will the budget be going out? Do you know when it's scheduled to?
The actual book?
To be mailed?
What, what is the schedule for the actual book?
So, we're picking, can't see it, Brad. We're picking the books up on Tuesday, and they're going out Wednesday.
Wonderful, thank you.
Next, not tomorrow, Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Okay, good, no, that's great.
Other public participation this evening. Lee Cars?
I'm wondering, what is the town's financial responsibility, if any, in the integrity animal welfare case regarding the animals and their care?
If it's okay, I will defer to the town manager on this, because I believe he found out some stuff as that was all unfolding.
So I'm gonna try to answer this, and I'm gonna keep Chief with my right eye here, because I screwed it up. We have a financial obligation to assist with costs until the folks that own the animals surrendered them in the court.
Right.
And after that, it was up to, I can't think of the name of the place. Kindred Way Sanctuary, in the building, kind of named.
Chief Perkel, did you say those two organizations are going to be here?
Yep, the Kindred Way Sanctuary.
Kindred Way?
And the Ruddy County Domain Society. They became financially obligated as of the fourth... Fourth, I remember the fourth. They were financially obligated, as a February 4th, right?
So, so the recap is, the 31st was the date that the town became obligated to take care of the animals. The fourth was the court date, when the owner of the animals surrendered the animals from his possession. And so, in the intervening time, the town financially has to take care of them, and the, I, I have to say, I mean, I haven't had anything to do with this, but I have just been really heartened by the response of the animal community. Many, many people, and I saw the picture of all the, you know, trailers lined up on the road that day to pick up the livestock and so forth, many, many people with no thought to the expense involved, or the inconvenience to them, have taken these animals and brought them to their homes and farms and so forth. So I, and I think that speaks very well to, not just the people around here, but to, in particular, the people around here who are farmers, who take care of the animals. Can I include Mr. Bailey in that? I know Mr. Bailey's...
Yeah, and I can, Chief, I had some information to give you, maybe after the meeting, but if not, I'll see you tomorrow. But yeah, the Kindred Way Sanctuary, actually, owners were in town today, and they did come look at the sheep and the goats, at least today, and are trying to make arrangements to facilitate those going forward, so I've got some info for you.
Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Other public comment and participation tonight?
I have a question, I guess it's on the roof that Dave said they did a preliminary plan on, is that just really preliminary? Because I couldn't read it. I couldn't tell what the columns were made up and stuff.
Yeah, it's just a draft.
It was so fine.
And it'll be, it'll be a cost estimate now that we, we like, in terms of line, yeah, it's pretty small.
Yeah, because I couldn't, I printed it off on my plotter, I mean, I have it this big, and I couldn't read it. And I mean, of course, there'll be lighting, and, you know, so they've got a ways to go, in other words.
Yep, yep.
They'll do a perspective for you, I imagine.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, we just met with them.
Right, right, no, it's...
Weeks ago, so, you know...
Baby scouts, okay.
I was trying to, come on, guys, build this before town meeting.
Yeah, no, I understand.
They didn't want to move quite that fast.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Fast, yes.
Yeah, it's just, it's the early process.
Yeah, you gotta start somewhere.
Yep.
Great.
Further public comment? Nothing else tonight? Okay, we'll move along. Item five, there are a couple of appointments before the board tonight. We'll take them individually. We have an appointment, Mr. Atherton usually introduces these to us, do I introduce us?
Sure. This is, the first one is the Bravo Coordinator, with a letter from Mr. Tim Giles, just stating what's happened recently with the, with the board on that, that we've had someone resign, and he sparked an interest in being the chairman of that board.
I'm already the chairman, though. It's the coordinator position.
Coordinator.
It needs to say, I recuse myself from this part of the conversation, but since it's an open meeting, I thought I could just say anything.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve Mr. Brown's...
A nice question. Mr. Wyman moves, and Mr. Bailey is to, seconds to appoint Tim Giles as coordinator for the Bravo, Brandon Restorative Justice Program. Mr. Giles recuses himself. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer, because he's been involved in this for a couple of years, he's been running it as the chairman, and with the passing of our duty, we need to keep this program going, and it's just due to the total involvement, but that makes sense to me.
Questions from the public? None. If not, all in favor of appointing Tim Giles as coordinator of the Brandon Restorative Justice Program Bravo? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions?
Abstain.
Mr. Giles abstains. Thank you, Mr. Giles. Bro? Second, appoint.
So we do have a recent vacancy in our planning commission. Mr. Nelson has stepped down, and...
Ethan Nelson?
And we do have, Nelson Walter has sent a letter of interest. We got last week.
What's the pleasure of the board?
We advertise to position at all?
I, I don't believe we have. I think the board got Mr. Nelson's resignation on February 4th in the evening, and we had...
have Al Wilson Walter's interest letter February fifth in the morning, but I don't think this has been, I don't think we've had an opportunity.
No, this is the first meeting we've had since that, so this would be where we would usually discuss it.
Generally, it has been the practice that when a vacancy opens, we have at least announced it and given opportunity for people who have interest to express interest. What's the board's feeling tonight?
This is the first time I've been involved with a planning commission appointment. Had there been multiple people interested in the past?
In the recent past, we did have one two years ago, where we had to choose between two people. Not this past year, but twenty seventeen, maybe twenty seventeen or eighteen. The other thing I would just add into that discussion is this, I believe the planning commission meets the first Monday of the month. They've met since February. They won't meet again until after town meeting, so I don't think this is a matter of urgency.
Well, perhaps, it would be, it would be first good to say thank you for your member interest. We always appreciate people who are interested in serving, and so I appreciate that very much. And yet it seems that if we want to allow other people to know about the position, that tabling it might be a proven thing to do, especially since there's no planning commission meeting coming up right away.
Is that a motion?
If it needs to be a motion, yes, I make a motion to table it.
Do you want to put a time on table until after the town meeting? Or the Select Board makeup could change, which might change, it might change your opinion about, the Select Board and the planning commission are not incompatible. You could be on both, but if you're elected to the Select Board, you may decide you don't want me on the planning commission.
I want to do both.
Want to do both?
Yeah.
I think two weeks is probably sufficient for announcing it and allowing other people interest, do you think?
That's fine.
So, how do you guys want to announce this? Because usually we just do it here at a meeting, very sparse, more paperless, so I mean, highway department, yes, but usually the planning commission, no, so.
So the seat that's open on the planning commission is open for a term ending June thirtieth, 2022. So that's two years. And the motion is to table the appointment until the next Select Board meeting. Is there a second? Just one second, is there a discussion? All in favor of tabling the appointment till the next Select Board meeting, say aye.
Abstain.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that's not enough, we have to.
So wait a minute, if there was.
We didn't get enough votes.
If there was a aye and abstention, what is the other category?
Right, there is no other category, so we're gonna have to recount.
I see, yes.
So, again, those in favor of tabling till the next Select Board meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I say no. Abstentions? I say no to tabling till next meeting.
Abstain.
Mr. Bailey abstains. So the motion to table fails.
For lack of three votes.
For lack of a majority.
Then it's fine.
Further pleasure of the board?
Well, then I make a motion to accept your application.
There's a motion to accept the application, make the appointment, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. What is the further pleasure of the board? I move to table the appointment until after town meeting. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
Discussion, is that when we normally appoint for this? I know we do a lot of appointments and reorganization after town meeting.
No, the planning commission is usually June, it's usually July.
Well, unless it's on a resignation, so this would be when it's resigned.
Right.
So if it were under discussion, I'm fascinated. So what's the other benefit of tabling for more than two weeks? So why didn't you suggest that?
I think the Select Board composition could change in two weeks.
And you think that's likely to change the outcome of this appointment?
Whether it's likely or not likely, I think that the present Select Board may well not be the Select Board after town meeting.
May I add something to this conversation?
Certainly.
I've had a couple instances in the last pasture where there have not been enough people at a planning commission meeting to have a forum, which means they have a meeting where they can't make any decisions because they don't have enough people to do it. So just want to throw that out there.
And since we're in discussion mode, I think I would suggest that we're the Select Board that's sitting now, we have a resignation now, and unlike our federal government, it decides when you're near the end of a term, you're not allowed to do appointments. We are the Select Board now, and so I think, I would say that it's our job to make the appointment now, and then if there becomes a position open when the new Select Board happens, then it's their job to make that appointment then. So that's my suggestion.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I might as well be open, and my reason for abstaining is, of course, we're running against each other in an election in a couple of weeks, and I didn't feel it was fair to vote on that. So considering that we have to have, so that's what I was expecting, but without Mr. Coolidge here, we don't have enough, and this all gets bottled up, so I will agree to vote.
I have a question.
Mr. Beal?
Where did the advertising of this get lost? Where is?
Nothing lost, like, he just resigned.
No, no, I know, but you discussed advertising the position, so if you appoint someone tonight, you're not advertising, are you going to have?
I don't think, we don't normally run an advertising, normally other members of the planning committee or people that are in this room, you know, come to meetings, ask the name on, and, you know, some, we get volunteers.
I'm gonna bet there's probably something on an article about our Select Board.
I think what Mr. Affington was saying earlier, though, was that this announcement at the Select Board meeting and on PEG TV kind of thing, and in the minutes for the number of people in town who read the minutes, would be the announcement of vacancy. But that it hasn't been our practice to place a hate attitude as if this were.
No, 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 okay. No, I understand, okay.
So there's a motion and a second to table until after town meeting, is there further discussion?
What happens, well, I guess, what happens, I mean, we haven't, we've decided not to table it for two weeks.
Right.
We've decided not to appoint you today.
Right.
If we don't table it till after town meeting date, does her offer of, you know, being on the planning commission stay open and, I mean, we can leave it to another time?
You're asking if it's, like, de facto tabled?
I guess. I mean, it.
I would say whatever the board has in front of it as a motion has to pass with three. So if the motion, if whatever the board gets tonight for motions, none of them pass with three votes in the affirmative, then functionally, yes, it would be tabled, in an indefinite way.
If someone makes the same motion as I failed, can it?
I don't think you can.
You can't do it again on the same night.
Oh, that's interesting. You can make a motion to reconsider, Mr. Moore will affirm this for me, I think, you can make a motion to reconsider if you are on the winning side of the motion that, the original motion.
Well, the original motion failed, it wasn't the winning side, because we didn't have three against, we didn't have three for.
So functionally, the two would be the winning side. The one is not the winning side on any.
Well, even though with five of us on the board, three of us would be a winning side.
We haven't had three on any.
Well, right, because we're missing a member. So.
What I'm saying is you can't move to reconsider because your motion lost.
I see.
You can only move to reconsider a motion that you were on the side that prevailed. The side that prevailed tonight so far has been the side for inaction.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Moore?
That would be my interpretation, as a moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So glad you came.
But it also, that also doesn't mean that it couldn't be revisited the next Select Board meeting regardless. If it brought up again at that point and voted on at that Select Board meeting, has a fresh issue.
Yeah. I think it can be.
Is there, if the motion was worded in any different format, would it?
Oh, that's interesting, yes. Go for it, bud.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
That's true.
With a second.
Unless we choose to amend that motion.
Is there further discussion, or is there amendment?
Well, okay, since we're still in discussion mode, so if we don't make, if no motion succeeds, and this goes on, we could bring this up at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And treat it as fresh then, and possibly have a different argument.
Yes. We're still gonna have a vacancy no matter what, so.
For two weeks, but as I understand, the planning commission doesn't meet for two weeks, is that correct?
They don't meet this next month until the third.
So they won't meet for five weeks.
So, Dave, am I missing something? Is there a problem with having a vacancy for two weeks? I just want to be sure I understand. Okay?
And I guess my point was, now that it's been brought up, it's been advertised, correct?
I think it's been advertised as much as we would normally advertise before the commission.
So, right, so it's, so it's been advertised, so if it comes up in two weeks, it's been advertised, a decision can be made based on that, so, okay.
Yes, I'm ready to vote. You're ready to vote? Is everybody ready to vote? The motion is to table till after town meeting. All in favor of tabling until after town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain, because I abstained in the whole argument so far, so.
Okay, so that is two to one to one, so that fails also. So, absent a further motion, then functionally, it's tabled but indefinitely.
Great. Unless Tracy or you. Tracy or you could vote, move to reconsider, because you're on the winning side of a vote. The two nos.
I, yes.
Thank you.
There were two yeses, but I think Mr. Moore is not against that, I think that's.
They wanted me to, I will vote.
Yeah, I understand that.
Further work on that?
I think the last thing I would say is I apologize for the abruptness of this, because I think you deserve that apology, and I hope you persevere and that we can see this through the whole.
Thank you.
And I also apologize, I felt coming into the room tonight abstaining was the proper thing for me to do, but then by one selectman being missing, that's created a nightmare, and I sincerely apologize.
Thank you.
I would change my vote if I thought that's what was gonna happen.
Okay, we'll move along. Item six, approval of a certificate of no appeal or suit pending.
So this is from our assessors, our numberic assessors, that pretty much says what it is, that we have no pending suits to recover taxes paid under protest, and we should have been doing this every year.
I was gonna say, I don't recall seeing this before.
So we have it this year.
Is this for our information? Or no, we have to, for our signature?
It's for signature.
It's a pleasure of the board on the certificate from the numberic assessor that there is no appeals or suits pending regarding taxes related to the April first, 2019 grant list.
This is required? I make a motion that we approve this.
Motion and a second, is there a discussion?
Okay, now, if we're gonna sign this, what does this mean? I mean, do we know that, we're just supposed to take, we're supposed to understand that she's telling us that there's no.
Well, we don't have any suits pending, or we would know. So that's exactly what it means.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to know how I know that that's true, and so I believe you, of course, and so.
If we have pending suits, you guys definitely know about that.
Okay, so this is fairly simple.
Further discussion? If not, ready to vote? All in favor of signing the certificate of no appeal or suit pending? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Item seven, approval of a draft policy on consideration of state and federal matters. So I drafted this, it doesn't say draft on it, but it's a draft, it's entirely the first pass with it. So I will give credit to Mr. Bailey for the concept of, he made an offhand remark to me a couple, three weeks ago regarding a resolution against resolutions, and he said it with a chuckle, but basically, that's what this amounts to, is a resolution against resolutions. I think there, many of you are probably aware, many of you on the board are probably aware, there's been some towns geographically near to us and distant from us in Vermont, which have taken some positions on matters which I believe to be outside the authority of a Select Board, and my desire with this proposed policy is to, I guess you could call it stick to the knitting. I think that the board functions best when it does what it is authorized to do, which is financial personnel and policy oversight of the town. And I think the board will get into trouble if it goes out of those guardrails and starts taking positions on amendments to the Constitution, things of that nature. I don't think the people of this town expect when they elect the Select Board that the Select Board is going to attempt to speak for them on matters like that, and I think it would tend toward disharmony on the Select Board to have levels of controversy around issues like that. So I offer this to the board as a policy when we don't have anything coming before the board right now. So if something were to come to the board and we had no policy, I think we would be obligated to at least consider it. If we do have a policy, I think it's reasonable to say that the policy is not directed at any particular petition or any particular controversial issue that someone might have decided to bring you for the Select Board.
I wonder if it's useful for the public over here who don't have this in front of them, and since it's not that long for you to read this into the record so they know what we're talking about, because at this point, the title doesn't entirely capture the policy.
If that's the case, I apologize.
And I would like to suggest, Mr. Chair, that after we read it, and we have any discussions here tonight that we don't actually vote on it tonight, then we bring this home and think about it for two weeks, like we have other policies that we've done, so that we have had time to do any investigative that we want.
So I can read it, or the only man allowed at Montram could read it, I know Bill has one for this.
Oh my God, that's your new title?
So I'll read it. So I called it policy on consideration of state and federal matters, but that's, this whole thing is up for debate. Purpose: This policy expresses the sense of the Select Board herein after a board regarding the propriety of board discussion, board facilitated discussion by the public during board meetings, and board action related to matters over which the board is granted no authority in the Vermont statutes. Background: Vermont municipalities and the officers thereof are granted those powers specified by the legislature and no other. This is called Dillon's Rule. General supervision of the affairs of the town of Brandon belongs to its Select Board, see Title 24 VSA Section 872. The Select Board has no authority to speak for the town on matters outside this remit. Such matters properly reside with state and federal elected officials and judges. This policy is adopted at a time when no specific petition, motion, or discussion is before the board, with a view to consider and enact a policy at a time when the board may fairly choose a dispassionate and impartial course. The board is likely to be presented with opportunities in the future to take positions on issues of varying levels of controversy, and having such a policy in place beforehand may.
and having such a policy in place beforehand may helpfully inform the board's response upon future occasions. Harmony is essential to efficient operation of the select board. Debate of controversial issues over which the board has no authority tends to undermine harmony as well as rob the board of the time it rightly devotes to matters under its purview, the efficient operation of the town of Brandon through financial, personnel, and policy oversight. Policy: Therefore, it is the policy of the board that on matters, including but not limited to the federal or state constitutions, law, or policy which are not clearly relevant to the board's charges in statute, one, the board will take neither action nor position; two, the board will decline requests to consider petitions or deliberate thereon; three, the board will not permit public debate to consume undue time at its meetings. This resolution may be waived in any instance or rescinded in its entirety by majority board vote. Thank you. So I move adoption for the second discussion. Is there a second?
A second for the second.
Second for the second discussion from Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Mr. Guy, did you have a discussion?
Yeah, I... I like that we have Dillon's Rule in this state. I think it's appropriate that we stick to making decisions on matters we have authority to make decisions over. And in fact, that's why I share your concern, because as I've seen in the recent news, and to be specific, just so it's not an imaginary issue for those who may not be following this, the gun sanctuary movement is perhaps the most appropriate example of a problematic element that I think this policy is meant to address. However, I have a number of two specific... specific issues with making a policy like this. And I think the first is that when there are issues that extend beyond the town and that are either state or federal issues, we all can have an opinion on them as individuals. And sometimes a reporter will even report on our individual positions as they're making their articles and they're saying, you know, Joe Schmo thinks this or that. And it's useful in creating a story and a narrative about issues in our public discussion. But a select board has a different amount of weight, and thus, for a select board to have an opinion on an issue could be substantively useful in moving public issues in the public discourse. Even though we may not have authority over making a decision, it still could be useful. Like, for example, let's say there's businesses that we want to attract to our town, and we might make a resolution that says, you know, we as a board are in favor of certain kinds of industry coming to our town, which would be a way of sending a signal to businesses that, you know, we're welcoming for them. We might have a position about a state law that actually somehow hurts Brandon's interest. And by having a position as a select board at the statehouse level, they might say, you know, Brandon's select board, as a number of other boards, actually feel, you know, this way about this position. And this isn't implying, which is the problem with the gun sanctuary example, this doesn't imply that we have authority over these matters. It's not a false decision-making. It's rather saying, as elected representatives, it's not inappropriate for us to have discussions and make resolutions that might move the public discourse. And I might add that if the public is not comfortable with a resolution that we make, they're certainly able to come and be at our select board meetings and have us make a different resolution if they can convince the board, or ultimately to vote us out of office, which is an appropriate process for having the board accurately represent the citizens of Brandon. Would you care to discuss that before I give my second?
Yeah, the two examples that you specified, you know, trying to attract a certain type of business or industry and responding to a state law or policy that hurts Brandon, those specifically are things already that the select board does, can do, should do, wouldn't be prohibited from doing if this policy were enacted, because we are charged with general supervision of the affairs of the town. And economic development has been for, you know, modern generations recognized as a proper municipal function. And likewise, you didn't specify what kind of law you had in mind that hurts Brandon, but, you know, we've had an example in the last number of years, like a number of communities in Vermont have had difficulties with the way Vermont handles taxation and so forth with mobile home parks. And that, again, that falls under the board's general supervision of the town. We are the tax-collecting agents for the town and the school and the fire district. And we absolutely have advocated... I think Mr. Atherton has recently had some progress in the legislature on that particular matter. So none of those things, because those are local impact things, none of those things would be prohibited by having a policy like this.
Right, I think I was trying to identify things that we specifically don't have authority over, but that we might have an opinion on.
But we do have authority in both of the cases that you used as...
Well, and I didn't reach deep enough to find a position, a situation where it would be reasonable for us to have an opinion without having authority. Because I think that there are those cases where we don't have any authority, but we do have a reason to have an opinion.
I can't think of one.
Well, that's actually gonna be my third point, which is that most of the... of the things that you're talking about, we already have the authority, we already have a way to manage them. For example, today, if somebody brought up an issue in front of the select board and we felt that it was not something we could deal with, we could listen to them and decide, you know, we really don't have any authority over this. Thank you for bringing it up, but, you know, this isn't the place to handle the problem. And so we already can do this, so to have a policy... I mean, and this was my second issue, is that this seems to err on the side of limiting debate. And I think we should err on the side of the select board of encouraging conversation. And I worry that if someone brought something up in front of the board, one of the select board members might say, hey, you've got a policy that says that this really isn't the place to talk about this, before we even have a chance to really hear and make an informed decision. And I realize that you allow being able to overrule this policy, but I just worry that it already sets the bar at needing to have a majority to overrule a policy when we already, you know, have a process to handle discussion. I mean, I have felt there's a problem with controlling the public discourse for meetings.
In the recent past, there has not been. In the further distant past, there have been. And I think the third point in the policy acknowledges that public debate is appropriate and that people will bring issues to the select board without the select board knowing in advance, and people have a right to do that, and people should talk about that to the point where they start consuming too much time. You know, the recommendation from the League of Cities and Towns and from the Secretary of State's office is that when we publish the agenda, we put times, you know, on each of the agenda items. I am totally against that. I think that tends to stifle debate. And I think that that also... I just don't... I don't see any value in doing that. But a number of boards in Vermont say, you know, public comment participation... the school board, actually, for the town that we live in, right? So the school board has public comment participation, you know, like four minutes or five minutes or something at the beginning of the meeting, I think. And nowhere are we talking about that kind of a limitation.
Right, right, I'm glad we don't do that. I mean, when I look through this three specific policy items, you say the board will not take action, it's like we already can't take action on things we don't have authority over.
But boards are doing it all over Vermont right now.
But we already can't do that. I mean, the fact that they do that doesn't mean we... it doesn't even mean they can't. I mean, they're going to be challenged if, in fact, they're passing resolutions that they don't have authority to make. So I think that's redundant of the Dillon's Rule. The Dillon's Rule already says we cannot take action on things we don't have jurisdiction over. And I've commented on the reason for us to be able to take a position on something we don't have authority over, even though I have come up with a good example for you. The number two, the board will decline requests to consider petitions or to liberate the law, I think it's a mistake to decline a request without allowing them to make their case as to why they think it's important for us to listen to this. And I think that suggesting we're gonna decline a request is an example of erring on the side of cutting off conversation rather than encouraging it. And the third one, as you just said, we already have the way to limit public debate that seems to be consuming too much of a meeting. And so I don't think it's necessary to have a policy in addition to what we already have.
I think, you know, the gun issue and Pittsburgh's handling it brought this to mind. Clearly, I believe, two years ago, never came to anyone actually having a resolution, but there was some discussion around town on the marijuana issue, whether we should, irregardless of what Vermont law is, we should allow a marijuana store in Brandon or if the state does legalize it and comes up with their plan on how they're gonna serve it, we should have a plan that says we don't want them in there. And it's kind of getting trapped in the middle, you know, that I feel strongly about. I think, you know, Vermont's not that big of a state. It's not like we're California or something and it's like, oh, if it is, this is how we should do it. I think we should follow it. I don't want to be a sanctuary town or city.
Right.
Is my own feeling and why I... with humor, that we should have a resolution against resolution, to not get caught and spend time in debate on something, so...
I mean, is this really an attempt to basically restate Dillon's Rule? Because isn't this really just saying we're a town that observes Dillon's Rule? Which is to say we don't make decisions about things we don't have authority over?
Functionally, it's very closely related to Dillon's Rule, yes.
It's restating?
It might be specifying further than what Dillon... I mean, I find the need for it, because select boards across Vermont are filled with reasonable people, like we are reasonable people, who have a job to do, which is to deal with the finances, personnel, and the policies of the town that they've been elected as the select board for. And yet, those goodwill to people who are intelligent people, who I have no doubt about their intentions, they have this job to do, and yet, they have decided that they're going to enter into discussions that are tilting at various windmills or hobby horses or whatever the images that Vermont has.
Yeah. I understand, thank you.
I'm just trying to get us to do what we have been doing for the last five years, six years, which is paying attention to the things that the select board is charged by law with paying attention to, and making improvements in the town, getting the right personnel in the right positions, getting a stable financial situation under us. And I don't want the board to become unnecessarily divided because some crazy right-wing petition or some crazy left-wing petition comes in and we are put in a position, like you say, being caught in the middle of constituents who are supposed to serve, but constituents who would be better served trying to bring their petition to the quote-unquote "political branches". Like, these are... if you have a problem with, you know, the state constitution, if you have a problem with the federal constitution, we have state and federal elected officials to deal with those things. Like, we should be dealing with stuff that has an actual, real impact on the people who live in this town.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Guy?
We've dealt with this issue of something similar to this, I think, like the first or second year I was moderator. The corporations are people, and they wanted to get something on the morning about saying that Brandon doesn't believe that corporations are people. And it was dealt with that way to be put up... they were told to put it under other business, brought it up under the business, and the will and the voice of people was heard through a motion and a vote of, you know, 104 people voting in favor of saying that corporations are people and for things that they weren't, something like that. So the will of people can be heard in that way and shape. And it gives you also an outlet to say, this is not something substantive as the guns and other issues that we want to be decided by five people there and 15 of us here. This needs to be brought up, I would tell them, it needs to be brought up under town meeting and under other business. You stand, you make your case, and if you have 200 people at your town meeting, you have a significant voter representation of what your feelings are on a difficult issue.
That's an excellent point. So I want to clarify that this is only directed to the select board and that absolutely the town meeting is the town meeting, and the town meeting is superior to the select board in every respect. And the town meeting would have the ability to... anybody could offer a resolution that the moderator found to be in order. And this is not going to trim that liberty in any way.
It's a non-binding...
That's what you're...
It's a non-binding, yes, resolution, basically, is what comes out of a town meeting. And much the same as if we came up with a position, it would be a non-binding because we don't have authority, even if we did it at the select board level.
The difference is that the town meeting, there is no superior body in the town to the town meeting.
Right.
That's the we the people. We're not the we the people. We've delegated some authority from the people, and that authority does not include the authority to speak for them on matters other than municipal governments.
Okay, I hear that. I'd love to respond briefly to your comment, which I think is interesting, about, you know, if there were a left-wing thing or a right-wing thing and it caused division of the board. I'm actually one who believes a certain amount of conflict can be healthy. And in fact, if we all could learn to have healthy conflict at our whole levels of government, that would be a good thing. And so I'm not sure I agree that having, you know, kind of like this, having an honest debate about ideas is harmful. If anything, I think it further supports my feeling that this might be a way to nurture discussion. It's like if we came up with, if we accepted suggestions from the public on... to have resolutions and we talked about it, it might be a way to actually get the community talking about issues that could be quite disruptive.
I mean, I think we're having a constructive discussion right now about a matter that's appropriate to discuss at the select board. And I think that there are plenty of those matters that we can discuss and learn to be grown-ups about, you know, not seeing the same point of view. And I think it's an unnecessary injection of danger to open up to discussions that we have no authority to resolve.
Can you concretely identify the fact that you don't have that jurisdiction? Is that what you're gonna say? You're gonna be able to say, this issue is not... this is not the venue for that issue? Right, you're gonna be able to identify those situations?
That would be the effect of having this...
Yeah, and I think at that point, you say to them, the proper venue for this discussion is town meeting, and it's optically...
And not just town meeting. It can be town meeting, or it can be your state representative, it can be your state senators, it can be the court system in some cases, you know, but...
But only if they want the voice of the town to be heard, that's... town meeting is where they want you to have that voice.
Right. Further discussion? Further input from the public? Okay, so there's a motion and a second. It was for discussion. Do you want to make an amendment that we lay it over immediately?
I definitely would like to make an amendment that we lay it over and have a chance to think about it in a couple of weeks.
Great.
That's our normal on policy anyway.
A second amendment?
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to lay this over immediately. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's four. So the main motion doesn't have to get voted on, because we voted two.
The table won't be on the table.
Brian's gonna be so sad to be back.
My baby will.
Item 7A, Mr. Giles has a... An item about the ELSG insect control district report in the town court.
Yeah, in the last few days, I've noticed some things on the front porch floor, one of which you forwarded to the board, that there is some erroneous information in the ELSG report that's going into our town report. And in Salisbury, they decided to remove... And in Salisbury, they decided to remove the one paragraph that's erroneous, and the BLSG folks, I guess the word is accepted, that judgment of removing that one paragraph from the report. And the comment that I read was that it was difficult to remove it from the other towns because of the late date. And I guess specifically, Sir, everybody knows what it is I'm talking about, there's been some, there's been some problems with the BLSG making claims of health, public health messaging about mosquito control. And the Vermont Department of Health has apparently reprimanded the BLSG, advising them to specifically not make health claims about their mosquito control program, and that their mosquito control was primarily a nuisance control program, and not a public health program.
Can I clarify?
Please.
I believe they said the adulticide program was a nuisance control program.
It says here, "Based on data and input from the Centers for Disease Control and Protection, the CDC, we are certain that truck-mounted control of adult mosquitoes is not significantly disrupting amplification of a vector-borne disease or virus in the mosquito population."
Right, so it is not to say that all BLSG operations do not have a positive impact on public health. They are saying, the CDC says, truck-mounted spraying of adult mosquitoes does not, however, that is not primarily what BLSG's focus is, their primary focus is lar vacidal application.
Right, I think the part that I read that was, I think the reason I'm bringing it up here at the meeting, is that the environmental survey, it has a whole bunch of alphabet soup here. There's a state-level program in charge of monitoring health issues surrounding mosquitoes, and they specifically advise the BLSG not to claim health benefits from mosquito spraying. And I think that's the level of clarity that I'm trying to raise here. And specifically, I was interested, Dave, when you said that, I mean, picking up the reports in the 18th, which in my mind says that they haven't been printed yet, I wonder if we might consider the same solution that Salisbury took, which is to remove, well, just to be complete, to remove one small paragraph at the end of their report, which the BLSG agreed to remove from the Salisbury report?
So just a couple things, that I think I read the same article.
Oh, good.
But wasn't Salisbury also saying if they were trying to get out of the BLSG, or if they wanted to vote to get out of the BLSG, and this was one of their things?
I'd consider that...
That's my first question.
Yeah.
The second thing is, I don't know that we've ever been like the, we've never changed anybody's reports that they put in, like with the school district or the BLSG, I mean, that's not, you know, then we'd be sort of sabotaging someone else's words. I guess for me, I feel like if the BLSG came to us and said, "Hey, guys, by the way, we screwed something up, can we get out of the report?" Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I struggle with this as well, because, I mean, as a selectman, I feel like the integrity of the town report is something I have a certain responsibility for. If I know something is false in the town report, it's my job to speak up and say, "Hey, I think, you know, there's a mistake." And if, for example, the school board had a report, and I found something in it that was factually inaccurate, I would want that to be fixed if possible, you know, before we printed the report. And in this case, I don't think we'd be changing the BLSG's words, because in fact, they'd agreed to let Salisbury pull this paragraph. And what I read is that they would have pulled it from the other towns if it hadn't been so close to printing that one. So I'm just trying to figure out if we still have that option available to us.
I have no idea, I could call the printers and find out, but I still feel like, me personally, I don't want to change somebody's writing without their permission. I really don't. I don't think that's a, I'm not comfortable with doing that at all. I think that the BLSG should contact the select board and say, "Look, we need to take this out." I'm not comfortable doing that at all.
It might be appropriate to get, to be in contact with the BLSG and find out if they in fact would support removing this if we could from our town report. I think that would be the right order.
Mr. Bernie Carr?
If there's an issue, you always can bring us up at town meeting. You can say, "I'm just wanting to bring to attention the report." And this issue of the report, the good thing is, you always have, mostly have people from, anybody that has something on the morning usually has a representative there. And if you want to talk about getting information out to the public, that's a perfect time to do it.
No, I agree.
You can say, "What about this?" And they can say, "Well, yeah, maybe that the adulticide isn't as effective as lar vacide, but we feel it knocks down a significant number, blah, 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 blah." And it can help people make a decision on whether it's something they want to vote for or not.
Yeah, I certainly considered that as my only recourse, but I decided with a select board meeting, and still, before the reports have been published, that it was appropriate to bring it up at this stage.
I think there's a different dance partner with Salisbury and the BLSG, so that could be part of it, too.
Yeah.
Maybe they didn't, maybe they felt like they had to take it out there, and they, I don't know how they feel, we don't know. So maybe the town meeting isn't blessed to bring that issue up, and let them say exactly why they didn't want it.
Okay.
Other hundred reasons, of course. That's not the clock of reward.
Yeah, well, I'll wait tomorrow.
Yes, I'll wait. Further discussion? I really feel pretty strongly that the select board would be way overstepping its authority to make any edits to any of the reports that are submitted to the town report. I think that we submit the budget to the town report, we're accountable for it. We submit the report of the select board to the town report, we're accountable for it. Everything else comes from someone else, and they're accountable for it. And I really would hesitate to put us in that position of being the editor.
Now, I share your concern, and perhaps I worded it wrong, and Dave helped clarify it by saying, "You're right, just changing someone's words is entirely inappropriate." But I think checking with them to see if in fact they do consider it erroneous, which is the sense that I got from everything I've read, is that they actually agree that that paragraph is erroneous.
So if that's the case, I don't have objection to asking Mr. Appleton to make contact with BLSG and seeing if they will authorize a change to their home report, but I don't think it has anything to do with the select board.
Okay.
At this time.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Are you comfortable with it?
Sure. If even possible.
So we're like, move. That's about...
But it has to come from them. We can reach out to them, but they've got to authorize changing what they submitted, if in fact they wish to.
You might want to reach out to the printer, if they're already printed, maybe would be...
Well, and it's certainly true that the printer may be too far along, but I would suggest that when we reach out to the BLSG, we, you know, we're reaching out with specific factual information that suggests that that paragraph is inaccurate, and that it's not just a, you know, "We like this, we don't like this," it's a feeling thing. This is apparently a factually inaccurate statement in the report.
I totally understand and respect what you're saying, Tim, and I really think that Bernie Carr's comment of that this should be discussed at town meeting would be the best course of action at this point. And we had our proof for the town report last week, and it went Thursday, I think.
Yeah.
It's, you know, yeah, my father used to say, "It's a day late in the dollar show," and I think we're there, like, these changes would have been great a month ago, but we are...
No, if I'd have known about it, I certainly didn't hold back. It wasn't like I was waiting for this moment to drop it on me. And I struggled with what I should do when I decided to bring it up here, and I'm prepared to bring it up at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman? Just a question, too, and I may, you guys can hit me, about the head and shoulders brings up, but does this, if this were to happen, does this set the precedent then for next year, as kind of employees, that we have to go through everybody's report? So for instance, somebody that's looking for an appropriation, going through and fact-checking each of their reports?
Well, this is the danger.
I mean, I just worry about us getting to that point where we're now fact-checking everybody else's letters.
Well, it's important to see this as a spectrum, because while I would agree, it's a problem if the implication is that we now have to then prove factually everything that's submitted to the town report, but by the same token, we shouldn't have stuff that's clearly inaccurate going in or out of town report, just kind of going, "Oh, well, you know, we don't really have to think about this." It's like, if there's clearly something that we see is not correct, I think it's reasonable for us to push back and say, "This is factually inaccurate." I think there's a middle ground is my suggestion. I don't think we should just be accepting things in the town report without any...
I think then, actually, like, sorry, that next year, the select board should be appropriating that town report, and not us folks in the town office that our issues...
Maybe we need a careful policy to be developed, but I think that, I think common sense dictates that whoever submits the report is responsible for what's inside their report. And if there's a factual error in some other organization's report, not our authority to fix it, not our responsibility for having accepted it, we're not even accepting this report, we're literally just printing this report to deliver to the townspeople. They belong to the BLSG. If the BLSG has something in their report that is problematic, then the BLSG has to be accountable and answerable to the people for it.
Yeah.
Now, I understand, because I think, again, we're caught in the middle if we try to take any action that would change a report submitted by an entity that we have always published.
And I would agree, I don't think it's up to us to appropriate that thing. I would, the reports wouldn't be in here. I mean, if there's a problem, as Bernie said, I think that something needs to be brought up at town meeting for that particular report.
So there was, is there board action required? I don't feel like there's board action required.
Well, you had suggested that they might reach out to the BLSG to find out if they were interested in having the paragraph removed.
That's a suggestion, yeah.
I think that's a good suggestion.
And that's been acknowledged.
And perhaps, I mean, I'm happy with whatever he finds out from that in quarter. Well, I think we have to be happy with it, because if we're not happy with the answer...
That's why I chose to be happy with that.
Be happy.
Very good.
Better to be happy than no.
But as a matter of public information, I think we've at least used this forum to raise what appears to be a matter of concern in a report that's going to appear at the town report.
Right.
Thank you. Item eight, the two warrants, the first warrant is $110,265.47.
Make more, approve more, number one, 10. $265.47.
Mr. Bailey moves to approve. There's a second. Mr. Wine, second. Any discussion or questions on that?
Two quick questions, just at the bottom of the third page, top of the fourth page, in Vermont, to have their work program signed for environmental science, we bought replaced signs for, remember, in the town file room that Mr. Eggwatz brought up, and we bought signs for Prospect Street for the corners. I think they're already up.
Thank you.
I was curious about the psychological evaluation, assuming that there's some...
Mark out when we have a little possibility for...
Yeah. $15, that's very affordable.
Really demonizing.
Further questions? If not ready to vote, all in favor of approval of the warrant as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no, that's unanimous. Item B, Route 7 warrant, $36,699.7.
More, more to approve.
Mr. Wine moves to approve. Mr. Bailey, second. It's two boys and a kid. Any discussions?
Have you had a chance to look over these warrants, Dave? Have they looked appropriate?
They've worn.
Thank you.
Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no, that's unanimous. So at this time, the select board will recess, we will convene a board of sewer commissioners, we will then convene the board of liquor control commissioners, and then we will have one executive session on the agenda. Thank you.